All right, good afternoon. Welcome to Thurston County Board of County Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, June 4th, 2024. It is 2:01 PM. My name is Ty Mensah, Chair of the Board. To my right is Vice Chair, Commissioner Wayne Fournier, Commissioner Carolina Mejia, and to my left, Commissioner Gary Edwards and Commissioner Emily Klaus. We have our County Manager, Assistant County Managers here as well. Calling this meeting to order, and we're going to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance to be led by Vice Chair Fournier.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
See with the land acknowledgement, Vice Chair?
Yep. We would also like to start today with the land acknowledgement. We would like to acknowledge and thank the indigenous Salish people whose elders and ancestors have lived on and cared for the land and waterways of this county since time immemorial, and who still inhabit the area today. Specifically, the Squawson Island, Nisqually, and Chehalis people are sovereign tribal partners. Truth and acknowledgement are critical to building mutual respect and connection across all barriers of heritage and indifference. The purpose of this acknowledgement is to disrupt ongoing erasure of injustices done, and to remember history as a steppingstone towards healing.
Thank you, sir. Next up is approval of the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second. Motion and second to approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up is a proclamation for Pride Month. Presentation, County Manager?
Thank you. I think we have... Oh, they're joining us via virtual. Thank you so much for joining us. We'll hand over to them to make some comments. Can you hear us?
I can't read the names, so you guys will have to...
Oh, Natalie and Eva.
Yes. Yes, we can hear you.
Perfect.
Well, thank you for joining us. Would you like to make some comments?
Uh, yes. On behalf of the LGBTQIA2+ community here in Olympia, we would like to extend our heartfelt gratitude for the proclamation acknowledging and celebrating pride. This recognition is not only a testament to the progress that we have made, but also a beacon of hope and solidarity for all the individuals within our community. We're greatly appreciative, and we have some events. If you have time, we can let you know what's going on in Olympia for Pride.
Yes, please do.
Okay, great. So, we've been expanding these past four years, and we're growing and growing. So this year, we have four days on the calendar. On June 22nd, we have a Pride Pub Crawl that's happening in downtown Olympia, led by Lucille Balls, which is a local Latin drag performer. We have a block party happening downtown on Water Street on Friday, the 28th of June, and that's led by Luna Delight and her crew. And then we have our Day Festival that's happening at the Port Plaza and also Percival Landing, and that's expected to have over 3,000 people to attend. We have two stages, and everyone is welcome. It's family-friendly. We have an after-party happening at the Capitol Theater that is 18 and over, and that will have bands, music, burlesque, and comedy. And we also have our first Pride Parade back since the pandemic, which we're really, really excited about. And that will be on Sunday, starting at Tavoli Fountain, going down towards Heritage Park, where we'll all celebrate and rest in Heritage Park with some lovely DJs that we have from our community. And that's what we've planned for this year, and we're just so excited. We're assisting over 200 different LGBTQIA2+ artists, and they are very happy and excited to present on stage for the community.
Is the Day Party an after-party on the 29th?
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you.
And if anyone wants any VIP tickets, let us know. We're happy to put you on the list. We love to build bridges and partnerships and create community. This is a family event, and everyone is welcome to come.
Thank you. We also have... Is it Eva? I can't read too. Very small. Did you have anything you wanted to add now?
No, I'm just here in support of Natalie.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Guess we're ready for the proclamation?
I actually had one question for Natalie. Do you have any flyers that you could email us, electronic copies of for those events, so that we could maybe post them around the office?
Absolutely. We would love to. Thank you for doing that.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for being here. So, we're ready for the proclamation, and thank you to the Vice Chair for allowing me to read the proclamation today. So, "Whereas equality of opportunity and freedom from discrimination are among the basic inalienable moral rights of every person; and whereas the month of June is designated as Pride Month to commemorate the Stonewall riots in June of 1969, which are recognized as the catalyst for the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer rights movement; and whereas our nation was founded on principles that every individual has been created equal and with indefinite dignity and worth; and we call upon our communities to embrace this principle and work to eliminate prejudice everywhere it exists; and whereas Thurston County is strengthened by and thrives upon the rich diversity of ethnic, cultural, racial, gender, and sexual identities of its residents, all of which contribute to the vibrant character of our county; and whereas we celebrate the resilience of the LGBTQ+ community and their hard-won victories to advance acceptance and equality, we stand together, united, to defend and build on the progress of the LGBTQ+ community toward a better, more inclusive, and safer future for all. Now therefore be it resolved, the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners hereby proclaims June 2024 as LGBTQ+ Pride Month in Thurston County, and encourages all residents to recognize the contributions made by members of the LGBTQ+ community, and to actively promote the principles of equality, liberty, and justice. Adopted this fourth day of June 2024."
I would also point out that the county will be having the Pride Flag flown over the county offices here for the month of June.
Make a motion to approve the proclamation?
We don't have to do that. We just did it. There's no sense of... Our guests are virtual. We'll just skip the... Make sure it won't make sure this gets to the right place. Thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you.
Okay, next up in the agenda is opportunity for the public to address the board. The Board of County Commissioners welcomes comments from the public. However, there are some guidelines governing such comments to ensure they are appropriate and do not take advantage of the fact that most meetings are televised. General speaking guidelines include introducing yourself and the area of county in which you reside prior to your comments, address the board, not audience or staff, silence your cell phones. Speakers are limited to a total of four minutes and may not donate any of that time to another speaker. The board does not respond to public comment on an immediate basis. County Manager may follow up with specific items on an as-needed basis. The board reserves the right to restrict a person's opportunity to address the meeting for good cause. No outbursts of any kind or comments that are lewd, offensive, inflammatory, hateful, defamatory, or discriminatory in nature. Please be respectful. No comments that are commercial in nature, such as promotion of a for-profit business, or remarks about pending land use permits, or similar matters that could come before the board on appeal. And then finally, all written materials provided to the county may be considered public records, subject to public release upon request pursuant to Chapter 4256 of the RCW, which is the Public Records Act. Thank you for your cooperation. And first up on the list is John Pettit, followed by Vivian Eason.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is John Pettit. I live on Rich Road in East Olympia. Today, I'm going to make a comments about a couple particular things, and the first thing I want to relate to is the idea that you are the people's representatives. Now, that's a significant issue, because as the people's representatives, you're ones that are oftentimes given information in order to try to make good decisions. One of the examples I would use for questionable information you received occurred in the year '22, so a couple of you Commissioners weren't involved at all, but the principle's still the same. Supposedly, there was a reappropriation of $4,285,713 from '21. I'm pretty familiar with the budgets. I can't find that appropriation ever having been made. So I don't know how it could have been re-appropriated in '22, of which was ultimately approved by the Board of County Commissioners. If something never existed, but then it was presented as being something that was real and factual, and you made a decision on it, that is very concerning. It was later presented that you had $10 million of appropriations related to the Atrium Project. And of course, we know state audit findings certainly have indicated otherwise. Now, that being said, there's an RCW, which I'm trying to emphasize here is important. First of all, you're not individuals that's just being perhaps misled or misguided. You are the representative of the people. If somebody lies to you, they're lying to every citizen in the county. And is it your fault if somebody tells you something that's blatantly false? That you make a bad decision? If someone came in here and yelled, "There's a bomb in the room," it would be appropriate to say, "Let's get out." Well, if someone says, "We got plenty of money," it'd be appropriate and certainly debatable, but it would be appropriate to be able to use that. If there was no money, then you would have been misled or lied to. So that's where I'm going to apply, and as you know, I love to have my little props with me. Making a false or misleading statement to a public servant, that's RCW 9A 76175. A person who knowingly makes a false or misleading material statement to a public servant is guilty of a gross misdemeanor. Now, we all know that may mean you're in jail. Did somebody give you false or misleading information that caused you to make decisions that you would not have made? If that occurred, accountability needs to happen for that. I know there's a big part about you want the public to trust you. Well, part of trust is holding people accountable. And in this particular case, while we know we had certain audit findings already from the state, we do know that some of that money's at the price of the citizens making it up. So I encourage you to make sure people are telling you the truth or hold them accountable. The other part I'm going to do is, on a personal level, I want to tell you that I appreciate the fact the state just sent me a thing verifying I had made comment and request regarding the audit, and there were findings accordingly. But I also want to tell you that there was a time that I was held in a situation where, subject to people retaliating against me, even having a claim for legal damages of $33,500. This has to get straightened out. I mean, the option, now that I have proof, I could always file a claim, but I'm not about the money. I am about accountability of the Commissioners to follow the things, having the staff that helps them do the right thing. And just as a final note, I want to tell you how much I appreciate our new county manager. That was the best hire you could have ever done. I'm looking forward to continuing to work with him and you. Thank you.
Vivian Eason, and then Gary Whitley on deck.
Hi, I'm Vivian Eason. I live in Rochester, Washington, and I know all of you. I ran for County Commissioner last year against Wayne Fournier. And what I want to talk about today is the county roads situation in unincorporated Thurston County. This last year, the county Commissioners that are sitting here in front of us today voted to take $6.2 million from the Roads Fund and put into the general fund or other locations. And if you drive out to our area, especially like 183rd, which is the main corridor in Rochester, it looks like a patchwork quilt right now. And I have no blame on Public Works. I love the Public Works Department, their staff. That comes from not having the money. It costs a lot more money to do road projects because of the increase in supplies. I mean, I talked to them one time about how much it costs, you know, per foot, how to manage roads. They need all the money they can get. This is funding that is for unincorporated Thurston County roads. It should not be taken out of the Roads Fund and utilized for other projects. And so, and Commissioner Mensah and I were in a forum the last year he was running, and to the public, it was stated that they would start not taking so much money out of the Roads Fund. And that was something that was brought up that was a concern, and it was supposed to be less and less every year, but then it went up to $6.2 million instead of... Previously, it was $5 million. So it's... Instead of decreasing, it's increased. And so that is a concern that we have. And so, unincorporated Thurston County deserves to be represented by the board. We were sold on the five county Commissioners that we would have more representation. I've waited months. I haven't come here. I've waited, and I've sat back to see if there was anything or any changes in representing unincorporated Thurston County, and I've seen none. You have the comprehensive emergency management... At least, I worked for emergency management, sorry. The comprehensive plan, the meetings are scheduled, one in Yaun, one in Tonino. The one in Tonino is on Suede Days, so of course Rochester can't go to that meeting. And so I did contact them through Facebook, and they said they would be scheduling some out in Rochester. I mean, we are a part of the county, and we feel invisible. We feel unheard. We have no parks in southwest Thurston County. We pay park impact fees. We pay road fees. We pay parking impact fees, and we're not getting the services that we are paying for. The other thing that you put in a drainage, whatever, beautification thing out in Rochester, and it's always dry because our roads didn't get repaved so that the drainage is actually going into those. We're still sitting with huge mud puddles on our roads instead of them going into the drainage area that's out there. And it's become an eyesore. It's actually not maintained. It's just become a weed, noxious weed center, I would say. And when you guys were having some get-together out there, you got it all cleaned up. But other than that, it's not taken care of. So that's just my concern, is we'd like to see our roads taken care of. We'd like to see more safe roads in Rochester. We have a lot of accidents, especially at Denmark and Highway 99. We have accidents probably weekly there. We have high school students going out on from Highway 9 to Highway 12 without a roundabout, but we've put in two roundabouts to appease other parties. So we need to be thinking about unincorporated Thurston County and supporting our citizens that pay for those services. Thank you.
Mr. Whitley?
Mr. Whitley, can I ask a question of the county engineer real quick?
Yes.
Matt, how many miles of road are we resurfacing in southwest Thurston County this summer? 66 miles? 65 miles of road are slated to be resurfaced? Cool. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Gary Whitley, 4035 116th Avenue Southeast in Olympia. By now, you received three communications filled with many falsehoods from Mr. Shibe. On May 17th, I submitted to all Commissioners, Mr. Gelder, Mr. Whitford, our OLMDs' point-by-point rebuttal, to Shibe's May 14th letter and incomplete petition. Also, on May 17th, I invited Mr. Shibe by email and text to meet and discuss his concerns. We sent you a copy of that email invite. Mr. Shibe has not yet accepted our invitation. On May 21st, my wife Diane and I gave public testimony refuting all the false claims of illegality made by Mr. Shibe. We provided documentation, referenced the SOP you adopted, and gave links and other supporting materials. I'm here again today to share more troubling information about Mr. Shibe's continued communications to you as of May 31st and June 3rd, and to make a request of you, which I'll start from. Our OLMD requests that you set aside Mr. Shibe's incomplete petition and his numerous letters to you, at least until he agrees to accept our invitation to meet with us and discuss his concerns. If deemed necessary by you, we'd be willing to have a county representative, Mr. Gelder, Mr. Whitford, Commissioner Fournier, or any one of you choosing, present to observe and/or facilitate that conversation. Some new troubling details have come to light. Yesterday, we learned that the signers of Mr. Shibe's incomplete petition did not see the cover letter, which he attached with the petition. Yet, the heading of that cover letter says, "From the concerned citizens of O- Offutt Lake Community and members of OLMD." In that cover letter, Mr. Shibe falsely claims that some residents felt bullied and deforming the LMD and were fearful of expressing opposing opinions. We quoted this claim in a mailing to all of our Lake residents. One parcel owner replied to me yesterday. "I never saw or knew of the cover letter. As I wrote, I have never felt bullied or threatened by anything you or anyone connected with the LMD process. It is important to me personally that you and the steering committee understand this. I have never made any such statement, either directly or by innuendo. I have always felt free to express myself to you and the steering committee and pretty much anyone. I consider any such accusation serious, and know you have always held an open door." And the name of that person is being withheld unless you ask for it, and I'll give it to you, and I can send you the email if you want it. In closing, I state that there's been no change or lessening of support for our LMD. Our supporters still support us, and the people who voted against us are still against us. Mr. Shibe goes to great lengths to criticize his imaginary version of our work plan. The work plan comes after the completion of the I-VAMP, which has not yet begun, and even then, that work plan is curated with public meetings and input. I submit that you have many more important and reality-based issues to deal with than one self-proclaimed expert on lake ecology who refuses to meet and discuss his concerns directly with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Whitley. That's the end of the sign-up, but I'm assuming Mr. Trobridge wants to speak?
Brett Trobridge, who live on Patterson Lake. I have the very same message for you that I had last time, which is that maybe a year and a half from now, whatever it is that the I-VAMP comes up with, will be referred to the Department of Ecology, Mr. Sean Altican. His number is 360-870-3492. 360-870-3492. And as he indicated in his presentation to Walpa, if at that time, it turns out that there's any issue as to the jurisdiction of the people doing this, which would be you and the Patterson Lake Association, then he will refer it back to you for a map or a list of which properties are included and which aren't. So I'm urging all of you to vote against what's going to be brought up to you, I guess, in a few weeks. Keeps getting postponed. But is this really the way to run a railroad? You know, you're going to wait for a year and a half to decide who's included on a 10-year project? Is that really the way you want to go? I guess they won't give you a written opinion about whether my legal claims are true or not, but doesn't that tell you something? Doesn't that tell you that maybe there's some merit to what I'm saying? So I don't want to stand up to hear the whole four minutes, but I urge you all to vote against this when Mr. Whitford brings it up, unless you've somehow resolved the issue of who's included and who isn't.
Anyone else in the boardroom that didn't get a chance to sign up that wanted to provide public comment? Okay, can we go to Zoom? If someone can read through names, if there's non-staff?
We have someone by the name of Estra Cronenberg. They're not staff.
Yep, Cronenberg. Would you like to provide test... comment?
Yes, please.
Okay, you've got four minutes.
All right, thanks. Last night, I sent you all an email of an article and works in progress. It's about the strategic groundwater reservation. And I pointed out that no one really knows how much water is being withdrawn, but it appears clear that more is coming out than was foreseen in 1986 when the reservation was established. And because we don't test the water for most of the thousands of chemicals that are used today, it's also not clear how much of that water quality has deteriorated. Because this is such a critical resource, it seems clear the county needs to know the current state of the sole source aquifer before it can make any reason to prudent decisions about land use and development. So I encourage the board to fund studies that can come up with a water budget so that we know how much water is available and of what quality. Any decisions you make should be based on the true water reality if we want to avoid irreparable harm to an environment of the public health that can result from wrong assumptions. As an example of why we need a water budget, you're going to be discussing the working lands conservation strategy. That would rely on that kind of accurate information. Present, we see endangered species habitats and aquifer recharge areas being impaired as wetlands and rural areas continue to be developed. Before, we pave over more recharge areas and destroy more habitat, which is protected by federal law. I'd like to suggest that one thing that can be done is to give incentives to people who own endangered species habitat to keep the land as habitat. Presently, one has to find some organization that will hold the land in a trust and ends up costing the people to put it in a trust. people to put it in a trust. And it's very difficult for them to be able to put their lands into conservation. We should make it welcome and make it easy and profitable for land to be kept as natural resource areas. And the same can be done for prime farmlands. Thurston County should be able to provide much, much of its food for our residents. The people who do this work should be adequately compensated, and we should find ways of putting farmlands into trusts and provide housing on site for people who are willing to work it for the benefit of the community. So that's my, end of my, what I was going to talk about, but having heard the two people formerly that just talked from the Lake Management Districts, I just, and I will talk about this at another time, but I just wanted to mention that there is a person down, Rick Hatton, it's an aquatic harvesting company. He runs out of centralia, and he does mechanical harvesting where he harvests the plants that can be harvested. He said lilies are not a good candidate because they break up. But he actually harvests the plants, removes them from the lake, and then we could, you know, use them as compost. And because, like, everybody knows who's been doing the lake management, that when you fill plants with chemicals, they drop down to the bottom of the lake and they, they make their own compost. They become compost and provide more nutrients, and you end up with this never-ending cycle of having to use chemicals. Instead, there's a person here available that's in the area who actually will harvest the plants, take them out of the water, and then we can set up a compost pile and use that compost for quality compost that the county can use on its properties. So I encourage all the Lake Management Districts. I'm trying to arrange a call with this person, Rick Hatton, to, you know, explain exactly what he does. He says it costs about the same amount as the herbicides, and he does it because he feels it's like it's the right thing to do, even though it's a lot quicker and easier to use the chemicals in the long run. It's a very bad idea, and you don't need any permits or anything. So I'm hoping that the county will consider, you know, contracting with this, this company to actually use, instead of compounding the problem by continually dumping more dead plants at the bottom of the lake.
Ms. Cronenberg, your time's up.
Okay, thank you.
Send, uh, send Mr. Hatton's contact info to the county manager and we'll be able to-
I will. Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, I think that's it for public comment today. Thank you. We'll move to county manager's update.
Chair, before we move to county manager's update, I just, I know we didn't take a picture for LGBTQ plus Pride Month. I know we did the proclamation, but I, I still believe that a picture might be important to just post on our social medias. I know Public Health attends the Pride event every year and staff are there, and so maybe we might not have people here in person, but I think just a picture from the board and posting it on relevant social media will be, I think, meaningful as well. So if you're open for a picture-
Maybe our interim Public Health Director could come.
I don't put my hat on. I can't tell when it's on.
Okay, sorry. County manager update then?
Thank you so much, Chair. And Commissioners, good afternoon. I have several updates. I'm going to start by thanking Dr. Jennifer Freihite, Assistant Director of Public Health, for agreeing to step up and be the interim director after the departure of the director. And so we want to thank you for your, your work and your commitment. And I know you've already started meeting with the, the team. I would also like to thank Assistant County Manager Rob Gelder for his role too, in providing support to the department during this transition time. The next update I'd like to mention is Mayor Rob Gordon of the town of Bucota regretfully passed away this week after battling cancer. Our county flags will be flown at half-mast until Friday in remembrance of his life. I don't know if, and if any Commissioners would like to make any comments?
I, I don't want to say too much because I'll get emotional, but I want to thank the county for acknowledging Rob's passing and, you know, heart goes out to the community members of Bucota and his family. And I would encourage everyone that is able to, to look for ways to support his family if you can. There, I know there's a GoFundMe available. And it's, it's a, it's a really big loss to all of Thurston County.
Thank you.
I agree. I had the honor while I was chair, and Mayor Gordon had just come in as the mayor for the town of Bucota, and just getting to work with him, really someone who was there to, like, serve his community and just salt-of-the-earth human. He was just really such a good human being. And you could tell the passion that he had for his community, not only as a mayor, but also as a volunteer firefighter. And knowing those sacrifices that, you know, he's gone through and, and his family have gone through, I, I really want to extend, you know, my most heartfelt, lost for words, but to his family. I just, really, my heart goes out to, to his family during this very difficult time.
Okay, thank you, County Manager.
And my next update is we want to congratulate Public Works. They received a grant for 3.19 million to help with the Green Cove Fish Barrier Removal Phase One. And I do see our engineer, Matt, do you want to come up and say a few words about this grant and the project? I know it's a huge accomplishment to be able to receive that level of funding, and we're very proud of you and the work your department's doing.
Thank you, County Manager Matt Unsmann, County Engineer. So this is just one more piece of the puzzle of getting that $9.2 million project funded. The timing's great because we actually opened bids for this project next week. And the amount of county funding, local funding that's going in this project continues to dwindle. At this point, we've received close to $6 million in federal funds. We have some, some additional REIT funding in it, and we'll keep trying to find some more sources out there to even further reduce the amount of county road fund that goes into this project.
Thank you, Matt. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much. And we appreciate Jennifer Walker and her leadership. Then last update is regarding the East Martin Way Gateway Roundabout. InterCity, InterCity plans to provide a project update at the next InterCity Transit Authority meeting on June 5th. The update will include coordination with InterCity, what InterCity Transit is doing with Thurston County to expand the scope of work to analyze and evaluate alternatives to the roundabout that would preserve the current intersection design. At these, as these alternatives are developed, InterCity expressed that they would be pleased to host meetings or series of meetings either at InterCity Transit or onsite at Ridgeview. This would provide valuable opportunity for the Ridgeview community to directly engage with the consultant group about their concerns, explore potential solutions that would address both the community concerns and the transit challenges. So I want to appreciate the team for rounding up with InterCity Transit and also the Commissioners that had reached out to make sure that the community's concerns were heard and were being funneled in appropriate way. Back to you, Chair.
Thank you, County Manager. And since those folks who've been here the last few meetings aren't here today, can, can you be sure that that update that we got gets emailed to the right, to, to the, one of their kind of community leaders?
Yeah, the clerk and I will work together to those that have been submitting public comment.
I think that was pretty significant. They're going to spend time developing alternatives and have, you know, greater public engagement than was originally.
Absolutely. We'll send our comments over with the link that also allows them to know where to go to, to get more information.
Thank you. Okay, Commissioner Hens.
Yeah, I just, I want to address some public comments that we heard today, if you will indulge me, Chair, in regards to the road fund. I, we just went through a preliminary budget amendment I'm looking at, and we made a preliminary decision to transfer $2 million back into the road fund. And so if you'll please remind me when that budget amendment is going to be open for public comment, or-
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. The amendment is open now. It'll be posted in the paper and then brought back, I believe, June 18th. Is that correct?
That's correct. Right, so June 4th and June 11th, that will be entered into the Olympian so that citizens can provide comment at any time. And on June 18th, that'll be brought before the board for approval.
So for those community members interested in that, that is part of the budget amendment that I wanted to, to highlight. That was definitely a priority. I serve on the County Road Administration Board, and so making sure that our roads are well-maintained. And then I want to talk about an effort that Commissioner Fornier has started, and it's the Ground Mound Community Plan. And I'll let him talk more about it, but if he wants. But this was something that we heard while we were going through the different land use amendments last year. Community members from both the Rochester and Ground Mound area came in front of the board and wanted to, you know, they shared feelings that they did not feel like a community, and they also wanted to see those investments in their community. And so Commissioner Fornier has brought me into some of the meetings where, you know, he started talking with our different departments about rolling that plan forward and what that looks like and what investments the county needs to make. So we can start investments such as parks and different parts. So Commissioner Fornier, I'm not sure if you want to expand a little bit more on it, not to put you on the spot or anything, but just wanted to highlight that piece that you're working on.
Yeah, there, I, I'm, yeah, I'm not, trying not to respond to public comments on, off the cuff, but the, I, I believe that the county's making significant investments in South Thurston County more than it has ever. 65 miles of road repaving is, is a lot of road repaving, and that's, that's a big step in the right direction. So I'm, I'm happy with the direction that the county's going, and you can, you can be assured that there's going to be continued improvements to the, you know, the rural parts and the southern parts of Thurston County. So I appreciate the work that Public Works is doing especially.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. We'll go on to consent agenda. There are items 3A through 3K. Is there any item, Commissioner, which is to remove from consent? And is there a motion?
I move to approve the consent calendar as presented on the agenda.
Motion and second to approve the consent agenda, non-abatible motion. Call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Takes us to item 4A. Community Planning and Economic Development, contract with Environmental Science Associates for grant-funded working lands conservation strategy. Dana Bowers, Associate Planner. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Dana Bowers, Associate Planner with Community Planning. The item before you is a contract for grant-funded work to investigate the ways to improve the efficacy of current conservation programs. This includes programs like transfer of development rights, purchase of development rights, open space, and conservation futures. The grant is funded federally by the EPA and is being passed through the Department of Natural Resources in partnership with the Department, Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife. The work implements two docket items, item, comprehensive docket item CPA 16, the Community Driven Review of Ag, Agriculture Programs, and Development Code Docket Item A26, the Transfer of Development Rights and the Purchase of Development Rights Program. The grant from EPA was approved by the board in November 2023, and the Request for Proposals was approved January 2024. Two proposals were received and competitively ranked with Environmental Science Associates being selected. Contract to complete this work is 35, uh, $350,000, 100, 350, $350,155, excuse me, and has an end date of June 30th, 2026. Staff is requesting the board authorize the Director of Plan, Community Planning and Economic Development to execute, execute the contract and any amendments that do not exceed 10%. That concludes my remarks. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Dana? There's a motion.
I move to approve a grant-funded contract with Environmental Science Associates in the amount of $350,155 to complete the Thurston County Working Lands Conservation Strategy for the term of June 4th, 2024 through June 30th, 2026, and authorize the Director of Community Planning and Economic Development to execute the contract and any amendments that do not exceed 10%.
Second.
Motion and second to approve this contract with Environmental Science Associates. Any discussion? Call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Dana. Next up is 5A, Information Technology, Environmental Systems Research Institute Agreement. Good afternoon, Sheri.
Thank you. Sheri Ilg, IT Director. I'm seeking authorization to renew our environmental service, or system, Research Institute Agreement, which is ESRI for short, and sign a four-year contract not to exceed the amount of $966,240. We use ESRI for the core support of our county GIS business. This includes applications such as ArcGIS Server, ArcGIS Desktop, et cetera. And this amount has been budgeted and is collected in our annual IT rates. I can answer any questions that you have.
She's on ESRI. Commissioner Edwards?
Could you repeat that dollar amount? Something didn't ring the same as this morning.
Well, the contract is for $800,000 over four years plus tax. And when we talked about it this morning, it just said the $800,000 plus tax and 10% contingency. So, just to clarify, yeah.
Motion?
I move to approve the four-year Environmental Systems Research Institute Enterprise Agreement for the support of county GIS business for $800,000 plus tax, and authorize the Director of Information Technology to execute the agreement and any amendments that do not exceed 10% per each year.
Second.
May it motion and second to approve the four-year ESRI agreement. Any discussion on a motion? Hearing none, call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Public Health and Social Services is next. 6A, Amendment Number 20 to the Washington State Department of Health Consolidated Contract.
Hello, Commissioners. Dr. Jen Freihite, the interim Director of Public Health and Social Services. I am asking for a motion today to approve $294,840, an amendment number 20, for the State of Wiscons, Washington Department of Health Consolidated Contract, to revise the maximum consideration for this consolidated contract to continue through December 31st, 2024.
Questions for Dr. Freihite? Nope. Is there a motion?
Move to approve amendment number 20 to the State of Washington Department of Health Consolidated Contract, number CLH 31030, providing an additional $294,840 for a revised maximum consideration of $20,337,759 for the duration of January 1st, 2022 through December 31st, 2024, and authorize the interim Director of Public Health and Social Services or designate to sign the amendment.
Second.
May it seconded to approve this amendment number 20. Any discussion? Call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
The motion carries. Thank you. Next up is 6B, Public Health and Social Services, Amendment Number 1 to the Peninsula Alliance Program Agreement.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Mark Moffett, Public Health and Social Services. We currently have a contract with Peninsula Alliance to provide a healthy relationship course for people with intellectual and developmental disabilities in Mason County. The amendment in front of you today is to provide up to eight healthy relationship courses here in Thurston County over the next year and a half, to provide, in Thurston, in Thurston County. We have nearly 100 clients with intellectual and developmental disabilities that are interested in this service currently. And some of the topics that are covered in this class, they- And some of the topics that, uh, are covered in this class, uh, they define what a relationship is, what makes a healthy relationship, personal rules and boundaries, friends versus acquaintances, what is dating, what is consent, and what is an unhealthy relationship. Um, we intend to have four of the courses this year in, in our high schools, uh, Yelm and North Thurston to start off with, and then four to our general, uh, adult clients, and then continue that on next year. Um, and this is for, uh, $88,400 over that year and a half for those eight courses. There's one other point. Uh, that's all I have. Any questions?
Move to approve the amendment number one to the Peninsula Alliance Program Agreement for the revised total maximum amount of $88,400 for the period of June 1st, 2024 through December 31st, 2025, and authorize the interim Director of Public Health and Social Services to sign this agreement and future amendments that do not exceed ten percent.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve amendment number one. Discussion. Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Six C. Contract with Washington State Department of Veterans Affairs. Back to you, Mark.
Uh, Commissioners, this is, uh, a collaboration with the Washington Department of Veterans Affairs to provide a veteran service officer in the Lacey Veterans Hub for forty hours a week, five days a week. Currently, we rely on volunteers to do that service, um, and a lot of our volunteers are aging out and they don't provide that coverage for forty hours, five days a week. So this position would be hired under WDVA, but it would report to the county operationally. Um, and we're looking for $178,264 to cover, um, that year and a half that we'd be working with them and, and then at the end of that time, we'd reevaluate to see if there was a need. My most current data is from 2022. For the first six months, there were twenty, over 2,300 appointments just for benefits at the hub. So there is a need for this service. Also, I should say that the funding is gonna, is, is coming out of property taxes that are designated for, uh, veteran support, indigent veterans in our county.
Questions for Mark?
Move to approve a contract with the Washington State Department of Veterans Affairs for one veteran service officer for the Lacey Veterans Service Hub in the amount of $178,264 for the term of June 1st, 2024 through December 31st, 2025, and authorize the interim Director of Public Health and Social Services to execute the contract and any amendments that do not exceed ten percent.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the contract with Washington State Department of Veterans Affairs. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Next up is six D. Contract with Interfaith Works for Golden Gavel Operations and Keely Marino. See her square? There she is.
Sorry. Uh, good afternoon, Commissioners. Keely Marino with Public Health and Social Services. I'm here to, um, bring before you, uh, a motion to approve a contract with Interfaith Works. Um, this, uh, contract is to provide, uh, operations services for a program that will be facilitated in a new, um, permanent supportive housing operation, um, out of the Golden Gavel or the Olympia Inn that was purchased this year through the Encampment Resolution Program. Um, um, prior title of that was the Right-of-Way Initiative, um, through the Department of Commerce. And so they've been in the process of rehabbing this facility. Um, they will be able to provide twenty-six permanent supportive housing units to individuals that are connected to the Encampment Resolution Program. Um, they will be providing case management, peer navigation services, um, resource service connection, um, enrichment support, and tendency skills improvement. Um, they'll be prioritizing, um, placement from, uh, ERP or right-of-way, uh, placements that are already currently in their emergency shelter, and then will be moving on to other, um, housing projects within the, um, Encampment Resolution Program right-of-way, um, housing units, and then from there coordinated entry. Um, they, uh, each, each room will be approximately twenty, two hundred and twenty-five square feet. There'll be a living space. There'll be, with an exterior entrance, en suite bathroom facilities, a little kitchenette and microwave. There will also be onsite a community kitchen and a staff room, which would be for the staff that are onsite 24/7, as well as for, um, case management meetings, et cetera. Um, they also intend, within the first six months of operation, to, um, and following the initial lease-up of this program, they will begin, um, developing an advisory council, which would be comprised of neighbors of this property, business owners, property owners, residents of that program, other nonprofits, and a representative from the, uh, Olympia Downtown Alliance would be on that advisory council to be giving feedback and problem-solving with Interfaith Works ongoing with this project. So, um, this is for two years, uh, or to wrap up on June 30th of 2025. So this is backdated to April 1st of this year in order to provide funding for that, those operations. And, uh, that is what I have for you today. Like, I'd be happy to take questions.
Questions for Keely?
Uh, I'd just like to say that I really appreciate the, the, uh, the advisory council concept and then the continued engagement with the community around there. So thank you for making sure that that, that was going on.
Yes, thank you, Keely. I think you covered my questions about duration and about, uh, the prioritization of who's gonna be, um, slotted in there. So thank you. Is there, ready for a motion?
I move to approve a contract with Interfaith Works in the amount of $804,594 to fund operations at the former Golden Gavel Hotel for twenty-six permanent supportive housing units and authorize the interim Director of Public Health and Social Services to execute the contract and any amendments that do not exceed ten percent.
Second.
Second, a motion and a second for the contract with Interfaith Works for Olympia Inn Operations.
You gotta keep the Golden Gavel in there.
Yeah.
Okay. And, uh, any discussion on the motion? All right. I'll call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you very much, Keely. Next up is six E. Request for Proposals for Rent Assistance Payment Support, and we have, uh, Tom Webster to present.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Tom Webster with Public Health and Social Services. So here to ask for your approval to issue a request for proposal so we can, um, find a contractor or vendor to provide payment support services for eviction prevention rent assistance programs for single adults. This is really, they have an existing eviction prevention rental assistance program, so this is provide additional capacity specific for our single adult provider to help make those rent payments. So we're looking to issue the request for proposals this Friday on June 7th with applications due June 21st, um, with the goal of having someone onboard, getting services on August 1st of this year. Happy to answer any questions.
Touched on this this morning. Any questions? Further questions from the board? Nope. Is there a motion?
I move to authorize Public Health and Social Services to issue a request for proposals to obtain a contractor to provide payment support services for the eviction prevention rent assistance program.
Second.
Motion and second to approve these requests for proposals. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, Tom. Here exists to Public Works, three items. Seven A is Contract Award for Transportation Safety Action Plan. Becky Kahn, Traffic Engineer, to present. Brief the board.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Becky Kahn and I'm the Traffic Engineering, uh, Operations Manager with Public Works. In 2023, Public Works applied for and received a planning grant from the Safe Streets and Roads for All Program, or SS4A, for $264,000 to update the local county road safety plan so that it meets the requirements of an SS4A action plan. On April 25th, 2024, two consulting companies submitted proposals in response to the request for proposal advertised in the Olympian and posted on the Thurston County Contracting Opportunities webpage on April 4th, 2024. A committee of Public Works staff evaluated and scored the proposals. The committee selected Transpo Group USA Incorporated to perform the work as detailed in their proposal. This contract will hire Transpo Group to utilize the county's existing local county road safety plan to prepare a transportation safety action plan that meets the requirements of the SS4A program. The consultants deliverable will incorporate more public engagement in the process, develop an equity analysis, and include data analysis and report templates for periodic updating, updates and reporting in the future. Award of this contract in the amount of $248,000 and, $248,806 will provide a current transportation safety action plan, which will qualify Thurston County Public Works to apply for future SS4A implementation grant funds for specific projects designated to increase road safety. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Becky? No. Dana, ask for a motion.
Move to award a contract to Transpo Group USA Inc. of Kirkland, Washington to prepare the Thurston County Transportation Safety Action Plan for a total amount of $248,806 and to authorize the Director of Public Works to execute the contract and any change orders due to unforeseen conditions, not for changes in scope, up to ten percent of the contract, $24,881, or an aggregate of $273,687.
Second.
Motion and second to award a contract to Transpo Group USA. Is there a discussion on the motion? Uh, I'll call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Seven B. Resolution and call for sealed bids for Boston Harbor Water Main Replacements and Inflow and Infiltration Project. Joe Plahuda to brief the board.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Joe Plahuda, Senior Water Resource Engineer with Public Works. Uh, Public Works is requesting permission from the Board of County Commissioners to call for sealed bids for a contract to construct the Boston Harbor Water Main Replacements and Inflow and Infiltration Reduction Project. Thurston County owns and operates the water and sewer system serving the Boston Harbor community. Most of the water and sewer infrastructure in this community was constructed in the 1980s with some portions of the system being even older. The Boston Harbor Water Main Replacements and Inflow and Infiltration Reduction Project will replace approximately 6,000 linear feet of older, pre-1989, small diameter water main in the Boston Harbor community. In addition, the project will rehabilitate existing septic tank effluent pumping tanks to improve serviceability and reduce infiltration and inflow into the sewer system. Reducing infiltration and flow will help the Boston Harbor Wastewater Treatment Facility maintain compliance with its discharge permit. The estimated construction cost for this project is $2.75 million with funding provided entirely through the American Rescue Plan Act. Furthermore, this project is in the 2024 to 2025 Public Works budget and the 2024 to 2029 Capital Improvement Program and is in alignment with the County Strategic Plan Initiative Eight to support robust and well-maintained infrastructure systems for a thriving community and Initiative Nine to support environmental health and climate stabilization. With that, I'm available to answer any questions.
Any questions for Joe? None. I will, uh, entertain a motion.
I move to approve the resolution calling for sealed bids and authorize the county engineer to set the bid date and time for receipt and opening of said bids for the Boston Harbor Water Main Replacements and Inflow and Infiltration Reduction Project CP Number A053B and A511B.
Second.
Motion and second to, uh, approve the resolution calling for sealed bids. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And then stay right there, Joe. We've got item seven C. Resolution and call for sealed bids for Tamashan Water and Sewer Infrastructure Rehabilitation and Replacement Project.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, Public Works is also requesting permission from the Board of County Commissioners to call for sealed bids for a contract to construct the Tamashan Water and Sewer Infrastructure Rehabilitation and Replacement Project. As an element of background, Thurston County Public Works owns and operates the water and sewer system serving the Tamashan neighborhood. The water distribution and sewer collection system infrastructure were constructed in the 1970s and subsequently acquired by the county due to the system's inability to maintain regulatory compliance. The Tamashan Water and Sewer Infrastructure Rehabilitation and Replacement Project will rehabilitate existing sewer manholes, sewer main, and service connections within this service area. In addition, the project will replace older asbestos cement water main and deteriorated water service connections. The estimated construction cost of this work is $2.1 million with funding provided entirely through the American Rescue Plan Act. The project is in the 2024 to 2025 Public Works budget and the 2024 to 2029 Capital Improvement Program and is in alignment with the County Strategic Plan Initiative Eight to support robust and well-maintained infrastructure systems for a thriving community and Initiative Nine to support environmental health and climate stabilization. With that, I'm available to answer questions.
Questions on Tamashan? Nope.
Move to approve the resolution calling for sealed bids and authorize the county engineer to set the bid date and time for receipt and opening of said bids for the Tamashan Water and Sewer Infrastructure Rehabilitation and Replacement Project A053A and A511A.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the resolution calling for sealed bids on the Tamashan Project. Any discussion? Call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Joe. Next up is eight A. County Commissioners, uh, reporting on work sessions, meetings, community events as they wish. I'll start with Commissioner, nope, I'll start with Commissioner Clax.
Okay, um, so I'll just run through my calendar for the last two weeks. On the 23rd, I met with, um, Public Health staff on opioid abatement council topics. Um, I also met with some constituents regarding the courthouse complex, um, renovations and attended the Public Works rodeo, which was very fun. Um, and I hear there's a video out on social media, so you can see us driving large vehicles. So that was a fun day. Um, the 24th, we did a tour of Public Works with the county manager. And, um, on the 29th, I met with staff from Risk Management, um, to talk about the evaluation of sheriff's office requests for equipment and how they evaluate the risk associated with those, um, pieces of equipment, as well as just general processes for how risk is evaluated in our county. Um, on the 31st, I did a ride-along with our new county manager, um, around District Five and got to see some of the exciting parts of my district, which was really fun. Um, and then last night, I attended the Emergency Management Executive Seminar along with my seatmates. Um, earlier today, I attended a webinar on encampment strategies, which was pretty interesting. Um, a lot of the stuff, uh, I know our public health staff is aware of, but there were some new strategies that were discussed that I thought were kind of interesting. And then, um, tomorrow, I have a panel I'm attending on community land trust, so I'll be participating in that. And that's all I have.
Uh, land use issues were probably my most prevalent work-related topic. Uh, did attend over at the Mason County Sheriff's Office, uh, law enforcement breakfast. And, uh, one of the main things that I did was attend the, and participate in the Thurston-Louis-Mason Area Agency on Aging, because it's a demographic that I represent in more ways than one. So, so we have to watch out for those people. But I want to take this opportunity to point out that, uh, some time back, there was some, some, uh, physical argument about whether or not we ought to vote a certain way, arm wrestling and such that went on, but I would like to point out that I got whipped pretty bad by my seatmate out there on the, on the driving rodeo.
Yeah. I forgot to execute my bragging rights. I came in ninth place.
Well, I thought I, I bragged for you.
People, thank you.
You did well.
All right. Thank you. Okay.
Uh, just held various meetings with department heads and, and managers, including Racial Equity Program Manager, uh, Public Works Director, and, uh, had a meeting with District Court Representatives last week and we, we discussed the, uh, the courthouse renovations, uh, and, I, I look forward to talking more with my seatmates about that, uh, shortly, hopefully. Today, I helped, uh, kind of organize and then attended the funeral procession for, uh, Mayor Gordon. And, uh, this Saturday, uh, if you're free, Tenino is gonna be an interesting place. They're having their stone carvers, are hosting, uh, carvers from all over the state, so they'll have, uh, a big stone carving display, uh,
have, uh, a big stone carving display, uh, alongside the arts market, the farmer's market, and a community birthday for George Sharp from two to five.
Okay. It's good to know. Commissioner Mahia?
Um, my schedule was not as busy. I, uh, took some days off, but, so that was really nice. I'm very grateful for that. But I did attend the Childcare Action Council event, uh, and got updated a little bit more on our childcare situation in Thurston County, and of course, it's still not great. Um, attended the Fentanyl Communities and Crisis Panel, uh, and Sheriff Sanders was there, and, uh, I got, uh, the opportunity to ask a question in regards to funding. Um, Senator Braun and Representative Davis were talking about, uh, additional funding from the state, so I wanted to be sure of that, to let them know that counties are still struggling with all the demands the state has put on us, especially with, uh, public defense, and let them know that, uh, our coroner, uh, every year comes back with, uh, new, uh, funding requests because of the impact that they're facing as well, and let them know, of course, of the impacts on, on our local BHOs and ASOs. Um, I was not very happy with their answer, but, hey, what am I gonna do? Um, attended the intercity transit, uh, executive meeting this morning, and I've just had, uh, internal meetings with, uh, with staff in regards to multiple variety of issues.
I didn't mention one thing. I, I did a ride-along earlier this week with the Nurse Family Partnership, and, uh, and it was time well spent. Uh, I think that's one of the most, you know, just watching what they do is probably one of the most important services that the county and public health provides. Uh, so we have several nurses that will go out and meet and help and assist, uh, community members that are maybe, uh, you know, within certain income status ranges and that are kind of struggling, uh, with maybe, uh, a, a new family. And, uh, these nurses will go out and assist, help, coach, uh, and really life-coach people and help them, you know, advise them on, you know, moving their education forward, their careers, like things that are even outside medical, and it was really, really impressive to see, uh, the level of compassion that the, the nurses have for the community members and, and getting to see firsthand the service they provide. Commissioner Mahia, uh, really put me up to it, and I appreciate her, uh, pushing me in that direction. So, it was time well spent, and, uh, anything, uh, I, I can, I look forward to learn, well, it's tough. One of the things I want to learn more about is, is, is actually infant mortality rates in Thurston County, because apparently they're, they're higher than they are in other counties, and I, I just, you know, there's gotta be some kind of reason for that. So, I, I look forward to working with them more and, and learning more about that issue.
Thank you. Uh, for me, I had, uh, a tour with the Lake Lawrence, uh, Steering Committee members of the Lake Lawrence Lake, and we went all around the lake and saw all the different crannies and crannies and how they're addressing different issues on the lake. Um, I went to the bench dedication ceremony for Ken Ballsley. They call him Mr. Lacy. Um, he passed away, and, uh, last year, I want to say, and late last year, and there was a ceremony that was, uh, postponed because of inclement weather, and so it was rescheduled for last week, and I was able to attend that. Um, had a Building Code Council Litigation Committee meeting, uh, Emergency Management Seminar with my seatmates, and then meeting with community members about, uh, the charter. Uh, there's a, there's another group sort of percolating about, um, promoting a county charter, and so I gave them some information and heard what they had to say. Um, so with that, if there's nothing else, we are at the end of the agenda. We will be back at three thirty for a public hearing about animal control-related fees and charges, so stick around for that, or I see you in two weeks. We're adjourned.